We'll call the meeting in order. We'll have a prayer and a pledge led by Councilmember Keaton Fish.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on the edge of our empire, universal, with liberty, justice, and tolerance for
Heavenly Father, we thank you for another beautiful day in Goddard, Kansas. I just pray that you would guide us tonight, God. Allow us to make decisions that are ultimately what's best for not only today, but the future of Goddard. And I just pray that you would allow your presence to fill this space tonight. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Okay. Item C, approval of the agenda. Do we have any questions on the agenda? I don't think we need to add anything.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Motion by Brent, second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item D, citizen comments. I will note that today is a very special day because it's the day before Election Day. And I know that we have several candidates in the audience, but this is not a moment to get up and campaign, but to express any concerns or anything that you might have problems with Goddard or want to see something resolved. So please be very cautious when you get up here and how you use that time. So is there anybody that would like to come up and speak for three minutes? Come on up.
I don't have anything to do with the election.
All right.
I just have this real quick handout here because I don't have any to leave me here.
All right, thank you.
I'll go leave a couple extras here if somebody wants any of them.
I'll send them over.
My name is Leroy Bosch, and I'm going to pretty much read this thing because I'm a little nervous doing that. But I'm a member of a group of concerned citizens addressing the issue of utility scale solar in Sedgwick County. As of September 13th, Sedgwick County Board of County Commissioners approved a moratorium on solar energy zoning applications. It's effective until March 20th of '24. This decision provides an opportunity for citizens and municipalities to have input on new regulations governing a new industry that has far-reaching implications for all citizens. I'm not against solar as a source of residential and light industrial energy. I am opposed to the use of resources in Sedgwick County to help utility scale solar facilities that provide a considerable amount of risk and little benefit. When energies exported out of state utilities make profits and in-state ratepayers are stuck with much of the transportation costs, it's not a good deal. With moratorium in place, we have an opportunity to impact new regulations that will affect our county for the next 30 to 70 years, 35 to 70 years. Metropolitan Area Planning Commission is looking into proposed regulations from other counties in Kansas, some good, some not so good. We have looked into these regulations and would like to make recommendations for those of you to think about to best protect the growth and development of municipalities and enhance the future of those affected areas. If you have not been advised by M A P C, and you probably haven't yet, on the process and input points you will in the near future, we are asking that municipalities support some key decision issues addressed in Exhibit A when M A P is seeking your input in this decision process for new regulations. We think supporting these points is in the best protection of the aggressive companies that wish to make huge profit at the expense of local citizens in their communities. Exhibit B is a list of many concerns that other communities in the state have registered and they're looking at taking under consideration. Some of these points may be of concern in your community and should be addressed to M A P C as well. Again, we ask for you to support these in Exhibit A. Just real quickly, the points that we want to ask you to support down the road, and I'll give you a flow chart here, leave one of these flow charts here because this has been recently published by Metropolitan Advanced Planning. There is a meeting coming up in open house on the 16th. But most important of these things is locations. And the locations that we are, the recommendations that I have put up here are recommendations that other counties have adopted. The best ones we've looked at in the state of Kansas are particularly Butler County and Douglas County. Johnson and Ness, oh, not so good, and there's a lot of ones that aren't worth the paper that I'm writing on. But Douglas County and Butler County are by far the best. Location is actually the most important. Size, setbacks, abandonment and decommissioning is very high. Those things are some. I'm particularly big on groundwater testing because right now currently there's a big solar project that they're wanting, somebody's wanting to put in next year actually, over in the Cheney Drainage Basin. And the project over here in the Maze Colwich area is right on top of the aquifers. That's 60% of Wichita's water supply, and that's the other 40% of the aquifers out there. And as Mary Hunt recently made comment in the M A P C Advanced Planning thing, Douglas County is currently reexamining their recommendations because of possibility of zinc from these. So anyway, these are the things that we're exact, exact, asking you to look at when you have the possibility for input in that. Exhibit B is just a list of all the other concerns that other communities have voiced in their thing. With that, that's about the end of mine. I'm going to leave this with somebody. This is a flow chart M A P C Advanced Planning put out for the process. Your major points of input will be, well, you probably have input on the November 16th meeting, but in January with the cities and small cities and the municipalities that all have input, that's when it will probably have a lot of impact. With that said, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Leroy. Who's next? Come on up.
My name is Dean Sims. I'm a citizen of Goddard, live in St. Andrews, the state's neighborhood. I'm here to discuss a problem with a permit granted by the city for fireworks display. It's granted 2419 East Ridge Court. I live in East Ridge Street on the corner of the court and street. Don't dislike fireworks, not against the independence of the United States of America. I am against a gentleman that shoots off about 30 minutes to an hour's worth of fireworks from a residential street, litters by yard with five to 10 gallons worth of debris, burn spots in all of my cars, hotspots on the roof, and the city permits this. If he wants to throw those fireworks out, then he should do it somewhere where it doesn't damage people's property. It's the only problem I have with it. I've discussed this with the neighborhood association, they've done nothing. I've asked neighbors to talk to him, nothing's changed. The three years that I've owned this house, his displays have gotten larger and larger and larger. He blocks off a street about a half a block to three quarters of a block long and has fireworks the whole length of the street and shoots them off for 30 to 45 minutes. I don't think this permit should be allowed. I'm looking for the city council's help. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I do have a question. We don't issue a permit, do we?
He gets a permit every year.
A road closure permit, but not a fireworks permit.
Okay, just clarifying that. Which permit it was?
Last year I called the police department out, they came out, he showed them a permit. The police officer came to me and said he has a permit to do that, we can't do anything. I came up to the city, the city offices that morning and spoke to a police officer about the issue and asked them beforehand to handle it before it became an issue. They did not. The next day, the next morning, my brand-new 2022 Hyundai Sonata had a burn spot on the roof. So every year there's been damage to my vehicles and my house. I'm still picking up debris from my yard. My yard is in direct path, right next to the display. Other citizens, other residents, I'm sure they love the display. It's beautiful, don't get me wrong, I like that, but it doesn't belong in the neighborhood, okay? It doesn't belong in the neighborhood where it's damaging people's property and where it's causing that kind of upkeep after the fact I'm still picking stuff up from my yard when I'm old. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Come on up.
Tim Milliken, I live at East Pur Street. I had some pictures and stuff for those who are going to talk about. Some of the drainage issues and the issues that we have across the highway, across 199th there, Goddard Road, where they're expanding the ball fields and parking lots and other things over there, but I would say, I've lived over there for 26 years. We have a problem on First that has been ignored for a very long time. The city knows what the issue is. It comes and looks, puts barricades up and drives away. I'm talking about the fact that when it rains and first floods, I've given a few pictures of the last rainfall, and it was worse than we have seen in a while. While, why it was so bad, maybe it's because of, we have allowed Stevens to build a cross from us first without addressing the drainage issue. This will not only add to our problem, you do know that the east side of Main has absolutely no culverts or any drainage system in place. All the water, when it rains, drains from all sides of the streets first, and then it has nowhere to go. The city did put one little culvert in years ago under 199th, but never keeps it clean until today, somebody was out there cleaning it out. Our road, First Street, in 26 years, I believe, has never been resurfaced or worked on, and it has heavily traveled. I'm sure you guys know that with all the school buses that go up and down our streets and the police department and the teachers, and it's very, very heavily traveled during the school. But in the 26 years, I believe, it's never been resurfaced and that, I'm sure the hope that we, the taxpayers, pay to have the second street paved. When you can put a drainage system over there, possibly when you guys do that, to help some of what we're dealing with. We did see, as saying this morning with the city crews out there for about 30 minutes, working on cleaning it out, but I have never complained or had really big issues with it until these parking lots over there and all those stuff is coming closer and closer to us and all that water's got to go somewhere. And when we had that last rain, as you can see in those pictures, it got pretty bad, and I haven't saw it that bad in quite a few years. That's all I have.
Thank you, Tim. Do you want your photos back? You want us to keep them? Who's next? Come on up.
Well, I'm here for the same reason, because I'm their neighbor. I'm Trina Morgan, and I've lived at 202 North Elm for over 15 years, and we are the two longest residents of that corner. And Matt, Tim's right, it's awful and nothing has been done. I have complained, when I first moved in, I complained 15 years ago, nothing. Then, yeah, they did a little bit of work across Goddard Road. It got a little bit better, but the last two years it has increasingly gotten worse. When the last rain happened, I happened to be out of town for work, I travel. My mother was at home with my two disabled adult sons and called me in fear. Do we need to leave? Do we need to go to my house? I should never have to receive a phone call like that when I'm out of town for work. It just shouldn't be happening. Our property values are being impacted. People can't get out of their driveways. Entire driveways are affected by this. Luckily, my driveway happens to be on the right side, to where we can still, most of the time, still get out, but she was worried. Is it going to get worse and we need to leave because she didn't want to be trapped in our home? So I really need this to be taken seriously, we all do, and it is because, I am convinced it's because of the building across Goddard Road that nobody thought about us. And that happens a lot, in my opinion, in this town. Growth is the most important thing, and I am not anti-growth, believe me, I'm not. I love this town. I moved here to raise my boys. I raised my boys in a great city, in a great town, in a great school district, but things are changing, and not for the better for those of us that live in Old Town. And that's the key here. We live in Old Town. Many people don't, and they drive over from across the other side of Kellogg to everything that's over here, and it's gray, but we live here. And I want to stay here. I do not want to leave this town, but if this situation isn't improved, I'm going to have to think about leaving because I can't, I can't deal with this anymore. And I've paid, I pay taxes just like everybody else does, we all do, and it just feels like it's being ignored. And we feel like, I feel like our quality of life, my quality of life has been impacted, not just by the drainage and the flooding, the lights that they have over there. I had to spend $500 to have new blinds and specialty blinds put in my house to block the lights so that I can sleep at night and so my son can sleep at night because they are so bright and they are on sometimes 24 hours a day. It's not fun, believe me. I didn't enjoy paying that bill, but I did it because I need sleep. And so there are impacts to people's lives that sometimes I think is forgotten and isn't even realized until it happens. I get that. I totally get that. But this drainage and this flooding, this is going to impact property values, it impacts the city. They have to come and put these barricades up, and then people drive around them. I work from home when I'm not traveling. People drive around those barricades. Somebody's going to get hurt. Somebody's car is going to get flooded, I've seen it, I can't believe some of those cars made it through it. So I just think it needs to be taken very seriously, and I appreciate the time and I appreciate the citizen comment time, but I would really appreciate it if somebody would come and look and really pay attention to Tim's pictures. I have pictures, and it's only getting worse. So thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Do we have those pictures for Tim?
Yes.
Tim, you want to come back?
Thank you.
Who's next? Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Melanie Silver, and I am passing on a message from my sister Melissa Silver. Some of you have seen Melissa stand up here before. It's regarding the rezoning of 321 North Pine. Melissa has owned her home at 327 North Pine, adjacent to the empty lot. She's owned that home for 32 years. She asked me to pass on this message. If you will remember, you denied the developer's request to rezone 321 North Pine to a multifamily dwelling this past March. He is now renewing his request in a meeting that's going to be held yet this month. My plea to you is to take a moment and drive by this empty lot. See for yourselves how small this lot is. Zoning regulations say it's too small for a single-family dwelling. As the lot hasn't increased, why would rezoning be approved for a multifamily dwelling? As you drive by, please look at the homes on this block. Ranging from five to 32 years, they have all been occupied by the homeowner. We have a vested interest in our homes and our neighborhood. We are proud to be a part of what is considered downtown Goddard. We believe in the goal of revitalizing the downtown and immediate surrounding area, keeping with the current small-town vision of our community and Chamber of Commerce. We believe that rezoning 321 North Pine would be inconsistent with that vision. I respectfully ask you to again deny the request for rezoning 321 North Pine when it is presented to you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Melissa.
Who's next? Jeffrey Jones.
Yeah, there we go. I have a question about H3 tonight. I remember, gosh, it's probably a bit, a bit, when council took a look at that intersection. And at that time, it was determined that there was traffic issues, too many accidents turning right, and that's why we created the offset. Guys probably have a better name for it, but when I looked at the pictures today or yesterday about this, I noticed that part of the plan is to have a right turn lane right there. I'm just curious why we would do that if we already spent the money to have a right turn lane set back.
Are you talking about the frontage road?
What?
Yeah. Okay, yeah, that's completely.
Well, we said we made the frontage road back so that...
No, that was because...
Because the accidents?
No, K. Gott basically said you need to move your frontage road.
So it was three different projects. You had the frontage road, the road around the bank, and then you had the turn lanes, and then you had the R cut. At the time, they wanted to lump all three projects in together, and myself, when I was the vice mayor and the mayor at the time, we said we have to accomplish something because if we keep on kicking the road down the camp, we're never going to get anything done, and we're going to all of a sudden do all of these projects at once, we're not going to have any streets to drive on. So we need to piecemeal it and take it one bite at a time. So we did the, did the road around the bank, the frontage road. The purpose on that was because there was a lot of congestion building up there, and so once we moved it back, it's, it has alleviated some of the traffic flow, the buildup, to go west. Of course, we're doing the R cut, everybody's seeing that, and now we still have 20% left of the engineering on the 183rd turn lanes. I believe Trans Systems is the engineer on that project. But we can discuss that on this, on this agenda item. But the reason why it was split up is because doing it all at the same time would be horrific. Yeah. Thank you, Jeffrey.
Anybody else? Come on.
I know. I wasn't going to speak. I'm Kevin Beetson, 405 Richards Road. Once I heard people talking about the drainage, I'm just curious, a show of hands, did anybody go look at your new neighborhood on 215th and 23rd during the last rain? You have problems, big problems. I don't live on 23rd Street, but guess where that water goes? Under 23rd and into those homes over there. If you want to see some amazing videos, I've got them. Looks like the big river. I think you're going to have people here in a couple of years doing just like they are now and saying, we've got a problem, but it's not our problem, it's the builder's problem. They told you they'd build a neighborhood, they should build that neighborhood to drain correctly, and I know it's not done, maybe it's going to differ, but your big culverts under the roads in that tell me it's not going to differ. When that pond fills, you shoot it over to those people on 23rd. I don't live there, got no horse in the race, but what I hear from these people, you're going to have a problem, and in five years, nobody's going to be here, so nobody can say, oh, yeah, we knew. You need to hold that builder accountable now, and if you want these videos, I'd be happy to send it to one of you so you can show them what's happening because nobody was there during the storms. They were locked up and gone, so I have no idea if they know what they're doing to other places, but you got an issue. And if anybody wants the video, get with me after, and I'll send them all to you. I've got about four or five good videos, including those yards flooded on the other side.
Would it be okay if you send, could he send one of those to you, Michael?
Sure. Yeah, okay. Cool. I got about four for you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Krista.
Good evening. I'm Krista Hall, and I've just been asked a question quite frequently, and I had, and I wanted to know the answer too, so I thought I would ask now because it seems a good enough time. Why an appointed mayor versus an elected mayor? I've been reading the code of the City of Goddard, Article II of the Governing Body, and I've also been reading the Governing Body Handbook from 2022 of the Kansas League of Municipalities. Both are very interesting and informative, and I've been learning a great deal through this process. Please understand that I am not accusing in my inquiry. While I did question the decision of an appointed mayor at the time, I did not approach the council when the decision was announced. I take full responsibility for my lack of participation in our city government up until this time. However, I have been paying attention and I'm interested and curious. I only want to have a right understanding as to why this change was made and if it is in fact the best way to govern for Goddard to be governed. The questions being asked are as follows. When did the city choose to appoint from the council rather than elect the mayor? Upon further investigation, I found the change was made February 16th, 2021, but there was not an explanation as to why. The leadership and service to Goddard at that time was Mayor Larry Zimmerman, council members Mike Proctor, Hunter Larkin, Brent Trailer, and Sarah Leland. Council members Fish and Collins were not serving at the time. Our city administrator was Brian Silkot, city clerk Terry Lehman, and the attorney was Ryan Peck. Community development director was Micah Scoggan, and the chief financial officer was Matt Lon. Why did the city leadership choose this form of government for our community? And what are the benefits for the community of an appointed mayor from the council versus a citizen election? What are the steps involved to restore citizen election if that is what is best for the community? I'm presenting these questions to the remaining council and city staff who were present at the time of the change to have an opportunity to give an accurate, informative, and clear explanation to the, to the community. Is it possible to address this change of governing in this meeting? Or if a more time is needed to thoughtfully address the answer, to thoughtfully address and answer these questions, please consider expediently following up at the next council meeting. I believe transparency in this matter will go a long way in rebuilding trust in the city leadership, between the city leadership and the citizens of Goddard.
Okay. I love this question because it's a very simple answer. When I first became mayor, it was after Mayor Blue Ball stepped down with his issues, and when, once that happened, I sat in this chair, and my vice mayor at the time, which was Larry Zimmerman, he worked with the former city administrator to come up with a plan on how to change government, our bench that we sit here. Larry, at the time, did not like that form of government because he felt that the mayor, previously Jamie Blue Ball and Marcy Gregory, they ran around town promising things to certain people, and they didn't have a vote. They would go around, say anything they wanted, and then once it got voted down, they'd point the finger, well, it's their fault, it's the council members' fault. Well, that seat that's sit all the way at the very end, sat empty for, I think about two months, until Larry and staff could come up with a new plan on how to restructure the government. I myself actually didn't vote for that plan, I wasn't there at that meeting. There's two caveats. One is you don't vote for a mayor. You're not voting for Mayor Larkin, you vote for council member Larkin, right? Then the council votes for a mayor. The other caveat is, well, at least you hold me accountable as mayor because I have a vote. One of the most important things when you're a politician and to the community is that an elected official should actually say what they do. Most of the time politicians never do what they say, they just talk and talk and talk until you're just, they're blue in the face, right? But this form of government, it allows the mayor to have a vote, and so if I make you guys unhappy, and if I vote the wrong way, then you can show up and says, well, no, Hunter, you didn't do what you said that you were going to do. When you met us down at the coffee shop, you said you were going to do one thing. When you met us down at the coffee shop, you said you were going to do one thing, but then, when you got on the bench, you did another. So there's value in what we have. Now, how you were to be able to change that, you would simply say it's a four-member council, and you vote for the mayor, right? You can do that. It can still be a five-member governing body with each member having a vote, but you would have to change how we do that. It'd be a.
Yeah, likely.
But.
You can add members, you can reduce members, you can change the structure.
Yeah. So let me give you a little history because the reason why I love that question is ultimately, this governing body was changed to benefit certain people, right? And that very change led to certain people's demise. They're no longer here. So it's very harmonious in some fashion that the thing that they changed is the thing that ended their time here at the city of Goddard. So that's a great question, Krista. Anybody else? Going once? Going twice? So, okay, we're going to move on. Yeah, go ahead.
I do want to say, and I've seen this thrown out a lot, well, we don't elect that mayor. Hunter was elected as a city council member. So technically, when all goes as planned, the five seats here are elected unless we have somebody resigning and we fill in the spot. So we are all, oh, sorry. So we are all elected in the grand scheme of things. It's just not an elected mayor seat that doesn't have a vote. It's now anybody you elect has a vote. So that was one of the big reasons why we changed that is so we didn't just have a figurehead here who smiled and waved and made goofy videos and signed the paperwork. It was so they had a vote and were held accountable for what they were presenting in public.
Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda. Item A. Have we taken a look at the consent agenda and council paver?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda if no one has any questions.
Motion by Sarah, second by Brent, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Item H1.
Honorable Mayor of City Council, this is H1. So quick background. Due to the complexity of assessment proceedings related to the issuance of General Obligation Bond Series 2022-1, there was an accounting error omission that needs to be corrected. This couple of multiple lot splits within the cloverleaf subdivision requires supplemental assessment proceedings to address such error omissions and the amount of the specials that are being assessed to each lot. The county will be collecting more in special assessments than necessary due to the accounting error, and as such, city staff has spoken with the county about remedying the situation. City staff and the financial advisor of bond council review and prepare documents for consideration on November 20th for the respending of the cost. Question has come up about how to handle the difference in the amount of the collection by the county. One possibility is for the city to pay down the specials preemptively by sending money to the county before the tax bills are sent out. This would allow the city to address the issue prior to residents receiving the bills and asking for a rebate for the difference that they would be getting charged. County said this would be acceptable, and city staff has drafted this agenda item for consideration by the city council to see if this would be the course of action they would want to take. City council is considering paying down a difference in special assessment costs that were overcharged to the residents of cloverleaf in Phase 1. Correcting error in the amount of special assessments to the residents of cloverleaf, the resolution for the respend agreement will be considered on November 20th for setting a public hearing and formally adopting the resolution to respend the costs. Substantial assessment proceeds are prescribed as statute or substantially similar to the original assessment process with a public hearing requirement. Paying down the costs for specials through the bond interest fund would be generally what would be recommended. Financially, costs will come from the bond interest fund unless otherwise determined by county treasurer. Legally, it's approved as a form, and it is recognized, city council allowed a city treasurer to draft an amount equal to the overcharge of the residents of cloverleaf to pay directly to the county to reduce the specials on individual lots. We do that obviously amount bonds, city treasurer available, Kevin Cowan, he's our bond council. We have Brett Shobrin, he's our financial advisor, and Ryan Peck, he's our legal attorney. So at this point, something else, questions, thoughts, and comments?
So, yeah, I guess in a nutshell, city hall made a mistake. We have to go back and fix it. Those lots out in cloverleaf, the Phase 1, are higher than they should be. And so, we have to go back and respread it. I, me, Matt, and Micah, and Terry, we worked on it today as well. We spoke to Brandy Bailey, our Sedgwick County Treasurer. She told us that if we were to send the check to the county instead of trying to rebate each one of those neighbors back, then we can give her a list of all of the lots, and they will bring the lot reduction down. And so, it would be cleaner that way, instead of issuing checks to every single one of those neighbors. So. Is there any questions?
I know we do what the county said was the easiest way to fix that.
Now, we don't have a specific, we don't have a specific number yet, correct? Or have you guys figured that out? No, not yet?
We can do correction to.
Once you guys figure out the dollar amount, then just proceed with refunding. Yeah.
As long as it's getting fixed.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Keaton.
Second.
Second by Aubrey, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you very much. This is item H.2, this is a resolution for establishing Goddard Women's Club Day. So the Lions Club has reached out to the city seat, and the city council will only recognize October 10th as Goddard Women's Club's day. On October 16th, city council honored the Goddard Women's Club, the GWC, for their contributions to the city, both with founding the Goddard Library as well as their contributions to social programs and the lack of the organization. The Goddard Lions Club would like the city council to adopt the resolution to establish October 10th as Goddard Women's Club Day, excuse me. With this, will help foster continued recognition of the exorbitant accomplishments of the GWC in the spirit of volunteer service. So the city council is considering adopting a resolution to establish October 10th as Goddard Women's Club Day. Financially, non-legally approved as a form, it is recognized, city council consider the resolution presented. And I believe Matt Treble is here on behalf of our.
Come on, Amanda.
I'm the council, Matt Treble, president of the Goddard Lions Club. Part of one of the reasons that I wanted to make sure that the Women's Club was recognized and that we went as far as making it a day that we recognize in the future every year is because our history is so important to kind of remember and to keep in the forefront of how we got here. And through conversations with the Women's Club and reading and stuff, you know, they were the founders of the library and many other things that were in our community and the longest-running organization of 100 years. And so, I think it's important that we continue to look on how we can preserve our history. You know, our archives, you know, anything that we have of our history, the books and things like that. And I think by helping to establish this day, you know, generations to come will always know kind of how we got here. And I hope to see that we continue to look for other ways that we can preserve our history in Goddard. Because I would like to see, you know, where in the future, we have a place that people can go and actually see a lot of our history versus it being in basements of. So this is, I hope, a start of preserving our history and recognizing all those that have done so much for our community and that we're so grateful for.
Well, thank you, Amanda. But we first need to vote on approving this because I've already signed it.
It'd be kind of weird if we said no.
I make a motion to establish October 10th as Goddard Women's Club Day.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Keaton, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against? Okay, there's no bad guys. Good. All right, let's take a picture, folks. Let's get up here.
And one, two, three. Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Honorable Mayor of City Council, this is item H.3. This is the 183rd and US 54 turn lane discussion. So quick background, initial conversation with Trans Systems about modification on US 54 had several projects listed, which were the North Frontage Road realignment around First National Bank, Hudson City, the restricted crossing U-turn or R cut, and the turn lanes on the north and south side of US 54 and 183rd. The R cut and the North Frontage Road realignment were originally submitted as one project, the KDOT required it would be recent, and there's two separate projects later on. The turn lanes on 183rd were always considered part of these projects to run in tandem, but funding did not exist for the cost share portion of the project. Recent funding made available by Not David Hopkins Lane has made 183rd more tenable. Mike Longshaw, KDOT has reached out about the street, recently discussed if the turn lanes be considered, and has said he is available if needed to assist. Trans System has stated the design of 183rd turn lanes are about 80% complete. A KDOT has not signed off on the project yet. Any further design costs would have to be out of pocket by the city. Typical cost match between the state and the city is around 80 to 20 split, and the city paid 20%. This would have to be confirmed by the state if this would be the case with this project or not. I believe with access management control, sometimes the construction cost is 100%, but right-of-way acquisition and design has to all be out of pocket. So that's something we're going to have to look into. Project is currently listed as around $997,000 or around $1 million. This would be the city, cost would be around $200,000 currently, but more review would have to happen to confirm that. The city is reviewing how they want to proceed with the 183rd street turn lane project. Most of the design work has been completed. According to Chad Walker, Trans System has not been approved by KDOT yet. Like I said, Mike Longshaw has expressed desire to see this project complete, so it appears to be state support, so we'd have to find out a funding mechanism behind it. As mentioned, reaching out to the state, they did say there was access management application that we could submit for funding. The city will be looking at a cost match with the state potentially, but maybe, but as mentioned, design costs, field services, would all have to be out of pocket. So this is the 183rd, this is 54. The yellow is a sidewalk which would jog north and connect to the R cut down the road. There's a right turn lane here, and there's a right turn lane and a left turn lane which straightaway here. Sort of pull up in that area. Design of the project would help mitigate the traffic buildup, especially during peak hours. Financially, non-legally approved as a form, there's no prepublication requirements. It is recognized, city council received and filed direct staff accordingly. I will say that Brett Thautsky is here of Trans Systems. I do want to invite him up against his better judgment to come speak on the project, but he's got some more details on it.
Mayor, council members, thanks for letting me present. I guess I'm here to answer questions, what questions you may have.
I thought this was like on the list of KDOT projects to be like done. I seriously thought we had gone through the steps that we needed to do or if there were steps that needed to be completed, they were going to be brought to us. And so, I don't know what happened, where the ball got dropped, that we didn't get through with you guys and the state and get it.
Yeah.
And I'm not here to blame anybody or even try and do that. I'm just, my thought process was this was already taken care of, so I'm all on board with getting it taken care of.
So as the mayor commented earlier, and Micah, that they split the funding and because of that, the funding years, it got, this particular project got pushed out. So that's why the city at the time decided, hey, we need to delay until we can get the funding from KDOT. It's not 100% locked in, as Micah mentioned, but it is, it looks like we have a really good opportunity right now. The metro engineer, Mike Longshaw, has approached us, Trans System, several times because there are a lot of complaints about the congestion expected in the morning peak. So that's what sparked this. So we thought it was, we thought we had it all in place, and then, just because of funding, because of fiscal years, we had to separate that with the R cut. And the mayor also mentioned, I mean, for the city's perspective too, I mean, you have to kind of balance what, you know, what you have, what you can spend on, so.
So we need about 20% left of the engineering, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, and that, that cost is on us. And have we discussed with KDOT anymore on that 80/20 split? We do 20%, they do 80. Have we figured out anything?
So access management is 100% construction. So they would cover, generally speaking, if approved, 100% of the construction costs.
Okay.
But everything, field services, design work with Trans System, right-of-way acquisition if necessary, and utility relocation would be on topic.
I don't think we have anything else other than just the 20% left of engineering, is what I was told, right?
There may be some real minor right-of-way, but it's very small.
Okay, okay. How fast, if we wanted to get going, how soon could we go move?
Design or construction?
Yeah, finishing the design on it.
I mean, I've got a contract, I need a couple corrections, so I can get to tomorrow.
Yeah, all you need is a signature.
I actually need signatures.
Okay, all right. And as far as funding, we need to make sure we can work with the state on getting 100%? Okay.
Yeah, we have to confirm, the state is eager to have the project completed, but how eager remains to be seen in terms of talk and work, so.
Okay, right, yeah. Sometimes things change, all of a sudden, somebody else gets money somewhere, we forget about Goddard, so. Okay, all right, well, is there any action that we need to take direct?
I would recommend, if you were to make a motion on this, to motion the city staff to work in, uh, negotiate a contract for Trans System to be presented at the 20th.
So.
Motion by Sarah.
Most of you guys.
Second.
Second by Brett, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Do you have any questions?
You had a little bit, but we kind of, we're good. Well, so I just, I just don't want us to jump into this thing too quick and shut down 183rd and Kellogg while half of Kellogg shut down.
Oh, no, they're not going to do that.
So we. We're going back to back to back. I'm just, hey, I'm just asking the questions to make sure.
No, no, you're right.
I got, that's how I drop my daughter off at daycare. Keep doing it, all right, we're good.
You're fine as long as you don't speed through like somebody.
Yeah, don't cruise control, use your cruise control.
Well, just as long as we can get it in place, and then you guys will figure out timing and everything. Perfect. Okay?
Sure.
All right. Motion by Sarah, second by Brett, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Motion passed.
Thank you very much.
Honorable Mayor of City Council, this is item H.4. This is the Bridger at Maple Partnership Discussion. So quick background, the Bridger at Maple Development is located between 167th and 183rd on the north side of Maple. It is comprised of 168 lots with 24 being platted for single-family and 144 dedicated for duplexes. Development was considered for rezoning on June 13th of 2024, or 2022, excuse me, before the planning commission, and failed to pass with a 3-3 split vote. It was brought before the city council on June 20th of 2022, and with a supermajority vote of four in favor, passed the rezoning to R2. The planning plan was approved on November 14th before the planning commission, and final plan was approved before the planning commission on January 9th, 2023, and finalized before the city council on June 17th, 2023. Petitions for Phase 1 improvements were received, and resolutions were approved on May 15th, 2023. Resolution offered for sale of taxable temporary notes was approved on June 5th, 2023, under Series 2023-4. On June 19th, 2023, the city council approved the sale of the notes to the bidder of the lowest true interest cost. The low bid for construction was awarded, meets construction on August 21st, 2023. On October 20th, the community development director, being myself, was notified by one of the developers that the project may be experiencing difficulty with vertical construction, and would like to look at a partnership with the city for offsetting potential costs to make the project more financially feasible. Developer was informed to draft a letter expressing this desire afterwards was sent to the council members, including the city attorney and bond council, for them of their request, as now being presented tonight for discussion and review. Developer is present to answer any questions relating to the project. So developer Bridger at Maple would like to ask city council for a partnership with regards to incentives to help with the financial feasibility of the project. There's 168 lots, 144 duplexes, 24 single families, owned R2, 77 acres, 3.3 million square feet. This is the project in question. Here's Maple, this 167, 183rd is right over here. Financially, non-legally approved as a form, it is recognized, city council received and filed direct staff accordingly. Developer Fisher Wells is here to express his. There he is. So invite him up so he can answer any questions related to the project.
Any questions for me?
Well, I guess, I want to be nice to you because you're, you're investing in Goddard, right? Which is very important. Goddard, right, which is very important.
Yep.
But you do understand how good of a zoning request you've already gotten, with damn near almost a hundred percent duplexes.
Sure.
I mean, any other developer, local guy, would dream of having as many duplex allowances as you've had.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, to that point, you know, when it was originally brought to planning commissioning, planning commission shot down, and we came back to City Council, and there was an approval. I think that the reason why City Council approved it is because of the integrity of the project as a whole, and the fact that we were doing something that differentiated Goddard and the duplexes that we were building from the ones that are typically seen, you know, in the Wichita, twelve hundred fifty square feet per side, you know, cookie cutter type duplexes. And we, we want to amenitize the community and create more of a one-of-a-kind, so I think like, I know multifamilies is a bad word, but we want to create a community that's amenitized, high-end, and really differentiates the product in Goddard compared to what else is out there. And really, the reason I'm up here today is to sort of allow you guys the opportunity to keep the integrity, because I think as it stands now, there may be potential, we have to sell off individual lots to individual developers, and you know what that turns into, it's kind of the whole five, five built by this developer, five built by this developer, every, everything's managed by somebody different, and it becomes a less like manicured sort of pristine community, and that's what we were trying to avoid when they get together.
You're from Texas, right?
Yes.
So, I don't know how they do it in Texas.
Yep.
But typically, here in Kansas, they always sell off. You never keep a hundred percent. That's very difficult. It's very difficult to manage.
That's what the plan is.
And, yeah, I know that's what the plan is, and the higher interest rates, and it's making it tough to hold on to everything, I get it. I, I really do, I understand your position, but if we were to give some type of property tax abatement, people already don't like duplexes, people already don't like me because I support growth, and if I gave a property tax abatement on multifamily, I'd be hung in the streets tomorrow. So, I can't, I, I cannot in, in good conscience, because there are definitely more people in these duplex developments. I'm not naive to it, I'm very knowledgeable when it comes to these projects. But there's more traffic, how do we pay for our street? I mean, they're gonna be public roads, we gotta have some type of property tax base to pay for it.
Sure.
I don't want to be unkind to you, I mean, but I think you've gotten the kindness already from the city with the allowance of how many duplexes. I know what's gonna happen next. I already know, you're gonna go sell them off to builders, and you're gonna take what you can keep, and then that'll be it. I understand it. But I just can't honestly support a, any type of a property tax abatement or anything like that, because that won't go over well for anybody up here. And I don't think it would serve the community well, to be honest with you. And it would set a bad precedent for any other new developer coming into Goddard, who will, why does he get a property tax abatement and I don't, you know? It's a, it's a bad precedence to set. And I'm a big pro-growth guy.
Sure.
And I'll, I'll brag about how much I love growth. And I'm big, but I, we can't, I can't consciously say we need to grow that way. Everybody makes fun of me because I say I want to grow fast, I want to grow fast, but they think me wanting to grow fast means me not wanting to grow smart.
Yep.
Or, or responsible. I know how to grow responsi, and I can't say that's a responsible decision for the city to make. So, I don't know, I'll leave it up to you guys.
So I think my question for you is, if we were to say no, what's next for you?
Well, we're already under construction on Phase One, right? So those lots are gonna be finished, we'll just call it March, April.
Okay.
And, you know, at that point, you gotta make a decision prior to then. But before that, you know, we're already in discussions with lending and financial institutions to obtain capital to do the vertical construction, right? And so, months before that February, March, April timeline hits, we need to have a decision on what we want to do, right? So, we're kind of approaching and reaching that, that timeframe and window that we need to make a decision, and so that's kind of why I'm up here, is we're at a point in time where we need to decide if this is a one-z, two-z sell-off to developers, or if it's, hey, let's intentionally go build something that is owned by one person, is maintained by one person, we don't run into issues that most of these, these duplex developments in the past have run into.
Sure. I, I just, I'm gonna be straight up with you, I think that's probably the route you're gonna end up going.
Yep.
Because it's really hard for me to sit here and, kind of like what Larkin was saying, it's hard for me to sit here and think we should give you more incentives while we've got so many other duplexes being built already, you know? I, I don't think it'd be fair for us to, to help you guys anymore. I mean, you, you really do have a pretty good deal already. The, the former council that gave you this, this zoning, it was pretty sweet, so, yeah, I just, I don't know, but I don't, well, also, like you said, you've already started, so I would hate for you guys to tear up the land and then get upset because you didn't get your way and leave.
Yep.
But, but ultimately, that's kind of where my heart's at.
Yeah, no, I understand that, this was more just a gesture to you guys, because you approved it on the fact that we're gonna build out, maintain, and build a differentiated product, so.
And Ryan, I don't know, do you remember, was there anything in the, like, any other development agreements or any of that, that when we did rezon this, that basically said it does, in order to have this many R2 lots, it needs to remain under like?
I don't think there's a development agreement for this. We don't typically do development agreements for these residential developments.
Not if there, unless if there's some type of assistance from the city.
Unless there's, yeah, some said it.
Right.
Which would give us, you know, I'd have to claw that back or whatever.
Okay.
Short of that, no, we don't.
Not to rain on your parade, but also to give comfort to the community. You're going to sell seventy-five percent of these lots, fifty percent of these lots, I don't know, to more local guys who still manage their own rentals as well. You're gonna take the money and, and pay down your debt, I assume. I mean, I don't know what you're, I don't know your business model, but, I mean, they're still gonna be managed by professional people, it's not gonna be, you know? I don't want people, you're not gonna bring in some slums, you know, so.
Well, we don't have a lot of developers in this area who buy lots this size, single lot at a time, they buy large chunks, that's kind of how, I guess, for lack of better words, they roll here in this area.
It's very unusual to do what you do.
Unless they're like five acres.
Well, it's, it's a newer sort of idea, that a lot of folks that have been in multifamily for a while are wanting to do, people don't want to.
So, in, in your letter to us, you said, like, you're requesting assistance and partnership. Exactly what are you requesting?
I mean, you know, through conversations with Micah about this, there was, there's not, in some other cities that we've dealt with in the past, there's been a assist, assistance programs that, for example, Valley Center, you know, with the chip, and allowing for a city tax abatement and no school tax abatement for a period of time, to help curb the macroeconomic issues that are taking place currently, to attract development. So, you know, that, that in essence is what we were going after, and I was planning on having a constructive conversation if it was something that you guys wanted further, but it doesn't sound like it is. So, something like that, in the, in the form of abatement, or messing with the special assessments, either one.
Do you two have anything to interject on?
No, I'm out on both of those requests.
Well, I guess you got the temperature.
Yes, sir.
I don't think we need to make any motion. And for the record, he wouldn't insult them Texas, because I'm a Texan.
No, but I mean, to commend you as well, and this is kind of denying you and then trying to prop you up, it is very unusual what you're, what you're building, the type of build, and how you're doing it, you're trying to keep everything, which is not a, a usual way of doing business here in Central County area. Typically, any developer or builder doesn't keep everything that they're building and rent it out. You guys are playing the long, long game.
Yeah, I think, I mean, if, if we were to sell off lots to other developers to come in and develop, what is the incentive for us to build out the greater amenities in the development, right? So, yeah. Well, thank you guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
This is item H.5.
The boss.
I'm Reverend Layla, I'm the City Council. This is H.5, standard traffic ordinance. The City of Goddard annually adopts revisions to standard traffic ordinance, which is published annually by the League of Kansas Municipalities. The STO is a uniform code derived from Kansas statutes, includes local amendments pertinent to traffic laws adopted by the City Council each year. The proposed ordinance would adopt the twenty twenty-three fifteenth edition of the STO. The amendments included in the proposed ordinance would maintain the City of Goddard's compliance with applicable Kansas statutes while addressing local concerns. The Police Department is responsible for the enforcement of the STO. The ordinance must be published in an official paper on record, as proposed ordinance admits sections of the STO which are reviewed if necessary for the city. There must be one copy of the STO on file with the City Clerk, each police officer has issued a copy of the most current STO adopted by the City Council. There's a small publication expense for the adoption of the ordinance. Legal staff has reviewed the proposed ordinance and has approved to content form. The city authorized to access to the ordinance out of the authority and in accordance to KS 123009, 3123012, and KS 123301, and 123302. It's recommended the City Council adopt the proposed ordinance, adopting the 12315th edition of the standard traffic ordinance. You can do so by motion to waive the reading of the ordinance, and then a motion to adopt the ordinance.
I'll have a motion now, waive the reading.
Make a motion to waive the reading, have the order.
Motion by Sarah, second by Brett, all in favor, say aye.
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 Make a motion to approve the order.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Aubrey, roll call.
Councilwoman Fish?
Yes.
Councilwoman Layla?
Yes.
Councilwoman Larkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Treeler?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And now just saying with the Uniform Combat Defense Code, the City of Goddard annually adopts revisions to the Uniform Combat Defense Code, which is published annually by the League of Kansas Municipalities. The UPOC is a uniform code derived from the Kansas statutes, and includes local amendments adopted by the City Council each year. Proposed ordinance would adopt the twenty twenty-three thirty-ninth edition of the Uniform Combat Defense Code for Kansas cities. The amendments included in the proposed ordinance would maintain the City of Goddard's compliance with applicable statutes, Kansas statutes while addressing local concerns. Ordinance nine hundred, adopting the twenty twenty, twenty-one edition of the UPOC is repealed, and several changes are incorporated to the twenty twenty-three Uniform Combat Defense Code, and include, if you want me to go through these again?
You don't need to.
Okay. I don't read as fast. And here's a list of some of the other additions. The Police Department is responsible for the enforcement of the UPOC. The ordinance must be published in an official paper, record, and the proposed ordinance admits sections of the UPOC which are in need of necessary for the city. There must be one copy of the UPOC on file, the City Clerk, and each police officer has issued a copy of the most current UPOC adopted by the City Council. And there's a small publication fee, legal staff has reviewed, and proposed ordinance has approved to content form. Same way, we can approve the ordinance with a motion to waive the reading, and then a motion to adopt.
Do I have a motion to waive the reading?
Motion to waive the reading.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Aubrey, all in favor, say aye.
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 Make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Aubrey, roll call.
Yes.
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 So Aubrey, an aircraft under the influence, is that a thing? I saw that one, I was like, is that a common thing?
How do you, chief?
To be, I mean.
Yeah, come on, chief, what's going on?
Still up in the air.
Heroin.
Good evening. H.7 is wastewater treatment, solar, and water repair. Air is a low component in wastewater treatment process, and especially airflow can cause a wastewater plant to go anoxic, and maybe impact your ability to treat waste. Air is provided in the city's wastewater basins by three blowers, each blower is run by a hundred horsepower electric motor. Unfortunately, the motor on number two is worn out. This is the same motor that was put in when the plant was built, delivered a decade ago. After nearly fifteen years of problem-free operation, the motor failed to operate, was removed by city staff, sent to B&amp;B Electric Motor Diagnosis. They determined that the motor requires a complete rebuild, including new bearings, rotor shaft, and rewinding of the stator. Total time for repair is two to four weeks. We're requesting spending approval to rebuild that motor, cost is eighty-nine-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars, and that is a complete rebuild, and work could be done by B&amp;B Electric. They've got a good track, they've got a good family, a good workforce. Cost would be allocated a hundred percent to service and placement reserve, funded eight-thirty, sixty, sixty-one, thirty. Questions?
If we rebuild that, how much, is that gonna extend the life of the motor?
It's basically, I could build a new motor, new shaft, and winding it, and so, we'll give it another good ten years out of it. Electric motors are pretty resilient, they don't require a lot of maintenance, you can let them run, just keep them current, saying they're good.
Any other questions?
Make a motion to approve the rebuild of the motor operating blower two for a total of eight thousand nine-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars.
Motion by Keaton?
Second.
Second by Sarah, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you, Council. Honorable Mayor and City Council, this is item H.8. So on October twenty-fifth, the city was inundated with rain totaling about five point five inches in a forty-eight hour period. Between nine AM and ten AM, the city received between two and two and a quarter inches of rain fall intensity. This type of rainfall event is considered a five-year rainfall event, meaning it can occur, it can occur every five years in Central County area. You can see rainfall events in Exhibit H.8C. Areas in each city have, older infrastructure tend to experience greater levels of damage effects from natural events, newer infrastructure tends to have more modern models. Infrastructure helps mitigate natural occurrences. The cost for infrastructure improvements can be daunting, and long-term maintenance cannot be overlooked when discussing, when discussions occur about modernizing parts of the city. Because of this, several cities in the surrounding metropolitan area have adopted stormwater fees to help cash flow a fund to help offset these costs. City Council will be looking at these comparative costs and structures for consideration, adopting policy fee structure for long-term, stormwater infrastructure improvements at a later date. So this item is gonna be a receive and file item, there's no action to be taken now, other than direct staff accordingly. So, fee structures comparison and discussion, so these are different cities that have stormwater fee. They vary in terms of how it's calculated, but all of them are gonna have residential and commercial component, and then the monthly and an annual collection. We have a hundred and twenty-one commercial water users and two thousand forty-one residential water users, so the majority of the fund would be cash flow from the residential portion of it. These are annual total collection, if projected according to these numbers and metrics, and assuming that we, one twenty-one and two forty-one are punched into these models. These are pictures from October twenty-fifth, that's First Street, you guys have heard a lot about First Street, Congress, and so this is pictures, we, we did drive around, and I do want to commend Public Works, they were really on it, they were all over the place responding to calls, and I didn't have the opportunity to drive around with Public Works during the rain event, and so it was. Works during the rain event, and so it was, it was very interesting, telling to see which areas were prone to flooding versus other areas that were not. As mentioned, this is First Street that we're looking at, heading, looking east. This is over the industrial district, so you can see where the water was. This is the, you know, phone, this is the car we're looking at, heading east on industrial. The water is obviously very high at this point, and the cul-de-sac, at the end of the cul-de-sac. These are some of the culvert, some of the ditches, excuse me, and were inundated with water overflowing in some, in some areas. Finding actually an illegally approved as a form. It is recommended city council, you can motion to direct staff to draft a policy for stormwater program and fee structure. You can motion to not direct staff to draft the policy. You can table it for further discussion. These are all things to, for consideration. City engineer is not here today, but Brooke Brandeher is more than capable of discussing these items. He's got very in-depth experience with it, related to the stormwater issues plaguing the city.
I have several questions.
I wouldn't disqualify myself from answering questions.
When, when we get, like, normal rain, not like the five-year rain we got the other day, where my house, which is north of Kellogg, my backyard flooded. The road, 183rd, where that little Tanganyika thing is, that flooded, the sidewalk flooded. So, not like a rain like we have. Do we have issues in parts of town when there's not that catastrophic or large rainfall?
We have some, we have some trouble spots. We know First Street is, and we didn't think that culvert was blocked, and so we were out, the reason we were only out there pointing this thing, because it wasn't blocked. I wish we could have found a problem that's blocked that we knew we could fix. But we do have that problem on First Street, and that's, that's, any city that's had an older area that's built up around it, you end up having those issues. I don't know when 189th was approved by the county, but they elevated it, of course, and probably through some of the elevations and the grades off there. I don't know that we could talk, speak to the star bomb. That's an engineering thing. I don't know how much impact it's had.
How much it's had, okay. My next, you mentioned earlier, or somebody mentioned earlier, that we had requested a drainage study over a year, year and a half ago?
Two years.
Two years? I don't know. I don't know what day of the week it is sometimes. So, we had requested that.
Correct.
And that's Harlan's department?
Correct. It was requested engineering do a drainage study of primarily in old town areas wherever issues. And once that's completed, we can determine where we need to fix the grades, what culverts need to be replaced, repaired, removed, added, and everything can be graded. It's got to be mass graded from one end to the other. You can't start in one place and expect the whole thing to flow. And it could be a big endeavor, depending on what's come up with in that study. Now, I have not seen that study. I don't know where that status of that is.
Okay. So, I guess the first thing I'd like to do is advise staff to follow up with Harlan on that. Craig will be on board soon, so maybe that can be one of the things. He works with Public Works and engineering or whichever departments that goes with. I, I understand that sometimes we have to implement fees to start saving money to fix things in infrastructure, but I really, really don't want to add it to the monthly water bill. We just...
We just refinance.
We just refi, we worked on getting those lower for our citizens. They're still not low enough, and I hate to add more to our citizens than they're, they already have on their plates with everything going on in today's economy. So, I, I can't say I'm for the fee structure thing if we can find another way around financing it. Hunter had mentioned to me the money that we got. Matt, we brought it up to you.
American Rescue Plan?
Yeah, the American Rescue Plan money. If that's something we can look into possibly using that fund. I know you said we'd have to see if it...
I'm not exactly sure how it will, if it'll apply to stormwater use, but they want it to, they pretty much give a green light to everything water sewer utility-wise, but we can, I can certainly, I can imagine that it, but they basically don't want us using it for, like, you know, road projects that we, you know, just wish list projects, something like that. They want to actually enhance our infrastructure systems.
Right. Which, to me, this...
And like I said, it should. I just don't, I don't have the answer for that. We already talked about some other sewer-related things that we needed to address with that money first, so...
Okay.
And I don't, and I, I don't know what, you know, how much the 183rd turn lanes, Brent brought this up to me, but the Hawkins Lane money, we might have leftovers with that. I don't know.
I'm assuming that'll get committed towards 183rd.
Yeah.
But my thoughts regarding this is, first of all, we need that, we need that engineering study finished so we know what we're facing with Old Town. Because it's, like I said, it's not, we could borrow another tunnel under, under, I heard 189 to get more water off of First Street. That's not going to fix the entire geographical area. So, once we figure that out, we can get our, wrap our heads around the kind of cost we're looking at. Then, I know, I know, and believe me, I've, I've been pushing for a stormwater fee since I got here, not because I want to charge you more money, but because I understand that we have these issues. But even if we were to do some kind of a smaller fee, just to generate enough revenue that we can use it to make a bond pay or a debt payment on some drainage project, which, again, we don't know that number yet, so I don't want to, I don't want to start talking about numbers yet, but I'm, the possibility of, and I'm not asking unit directors to do anything on it now, but at some point, it might be worthwhile to charge $2 a month on our bill and even, and offset some of that cost. Because, like, I know we're not the city witch top, but the city witch top, last time I looked at my bill, it's like a $2 base charge and then 50 cents per unit of water used. So, it's not like it would be a huge addition to our bill, which I know we're already, you know, there's debate on whether they're too high. Maybe, on his definition, I understand that. But I'm just saying, and again, we don't need direction on it now, but it can be a very economical way to address these potentially big cost issues down the road because we can just dedicate it to repayment of debt for specifically stormwater improvements.
I do agree with Matt. Money typically helps, you know, paying for things, you know. I would say ultimately, I think one of the problems that we have is we've had a leadership problem here in Goddard. That's one of the reasons why the North Frontage Road never got done. That's one of the reasons why we drug so long to do the road around the bank. That's why now, all of a sudden, now we're doing Second Street. We had a leadership problem because the people that sit on this bench didn't advocate for things that they were talking to members of the community in. And they never did it. They never sought out. They just listened, and then the next day, it was over. So, now, you're seeing projects get done. Water cut, North Frontage Road, Second Street, the road around the bank got done. We're actually getting things accomplished. So, I think one of the main things is, who we elect tomorrow, they better be people who actually give a damn and who actually care. And that, they want, they show up here in these meetings and they take it serious, and they actually go out and do something, instead of just showing up here every, every two weeks, take their check and go home. That's not the way to do it. So, it's a leadership problem. Anyways, do we have anything else?
So, I guess, how, well, how quick can, I don't know who needs to be the one, but we can't just keep saying what we need to do. We need to actually start moving. So, who's going to contact Harlan and figure out where that study's at?
That'll be Micah to contact Harlan.
I'll call him.
I just want to make sure. So, then, could we potentially have an update on where that's at at the next meeting, hopefully?
Sure.
That's all. I just want to make sure we're actually...
Anything else?
That's it.
None? Okay.
What do you guys want to do with this item?
We're not going to do nothing.
Table it.
Yes, sir.
I asked you to follow up with...
Motion table?
Harlan? Motion to table.
Motion by Sarah?
Second.
Second by Keaton. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Governing body comments. Keaton, what do you have?
That will be done. That's it.
Sarah?
I just implore the citizens of Goddard to educate themselves before they go vote. Don't use Facebook as your education because there's a lot of misinformation out there. So, watch the meetings if you need to, hear what people have had to say, watch the candidate forums that have gone. Educate yourself. Contact the people running. I know it's last minute, but don't just go vote to go vote and say you did. And that earns you your voice to brag, but, you know, because we have an impact, even though some days I don't want to have an impact. We do have an impact. It is controlled impact, but we do have an impact over what happens to the city and make decisions for you guys, so, yeah.
Aubrey?
Yeah, I'm following up. I encourage everybody to go vote, and candidates, good luck. I encourage whoever ends up sitting in these seats. I mean, we're all a team here. And every one of you are valued. And just good luck on the election. I was afraid I wasn't going to get it. I'm flying out early in the morning. What time the polls open? Seven?
Six.
Six? All right, I'll be there at six.
Six to seven.
But, just want to tell candidates, good luck, and, and some of you guys ran really good campaigns, so I enjoyed watching.
Brent?
Well, not the polls, but, you know, Saturday's, huh? This coming Saturday is a big event. What do you think it is, Jeffrey Jones?
Is Saturday is Veterans Day?
Is it? That's awesome. What else?
You so...
Man, you know, this weekend is open weekend of festive season.
I'll do Veterans Day.
Wow. I'm not ready to go hunting, boys.
That's also my birthday. What did y'all bring me?
Did I eat your birthday?
Veterans Day is this weekend, too.
I'll be with my father.
City office will be closed Friday, observance.
City hall will be closed Friday, observance of the holiday.
Okay. Well, I've been trying to think about what I should say tonight. Tonight's kind of a special night for me because tomorrow's the election. My replacement will be picked. But I could give my old line that I always typically did on election days. Mama always used to say, if you don't vote, you can't complain. But my message is going to be a little different tonight. It's going to be the candidates. We've got six candidates in this room. Some of you I have come around on. Some of you I like, and some of you have disappointed myself as a young person and as the mayor and as a constituent here in Goddard, and going to be maybe one of your guys' constituents disappointed. Some of you have disappointed this community greatly because you have played into rhetoric, you have divided this community, you have spread lies and myths, truths, and it's wrong. And if the people of Goddard choose to elect you, whether it be school board or city council, I hope that you can put that in the past. And I hope that you can, once you sit down in this chair, you can do your job, and you can take out whatever personal opinions that you have of people and conspiracy theories that you have in your head and do your job. Because that's what you are hired to do once you sit up here. I hope that the people that have criticized me and I've come around on, I hope they win. Because I've been proven by them that just because you can be upset or disappointed or angry or have feelings towards anybody on this bench, the people that I'm talking about, and they know who I'm talking about, they truly care. They truly care. And they care about turning this community into a beautiful community. Growth is not a bad thing. It's a good thing. But divisiveness, spreading news stories, fake news stories, running to companies up in New York. I was up in New York two weeks ago. I was up in New York. I flew in to Newark, New Jersey, and I helped out with the young Republicans up there. And it's very different up there in New York. They're tough, like me. They're tough, right? No, but I told them that their mentality destroyed a little community in Kansas, split a town in two because of what? Because of nothing, because of lies. I hope the ones that have spread that, that made them feel good about themselves because it didn't accomplish a damn thing. I have nothing else to say. So, go vote tomorrow. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Sarah?
Second.
Second by Aubrey. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye.